One, to kind of give an update on some equipment that we began buying and outfitting our officers with a couple of years ago, or a little more, maybe two and a half years ago, but more importantly, to recognize and award good leadership in the field and to reward what we want officers to emulate when something goes really right, not just because of the right circumstances, the right equipment, but an officer to go out, take charge, and bring a good resolution on a situation. I get asked a lot, we the police, but me certainly as a police chief, I get asked a lot, what are we doing to try to mitigate a situation from spiraling out of control into a national event where you have loss of life, you have an ugly situation that occurs? And again, how are we, what are we doing to try to, it's not necessarily bring a peaceful resolution, but bring the best resolution to a volatile situation? So one of the things that we're doing here, that we've been working on for the last couple of years, is to bring good, less lethal options for the officers to have. And so about two and a half years ago, we began putting less lethal shotguns in all of the Rockport Police vehicles. And that, we completed, and every, if you look inside of a Rockport Police vehicle, you'll see a shotgun that looks just like that one behind you. They're all colored bright orange, and by policy, we don't put lethal live ammunition in those shotguns. The officers don't even carry lethal shotgun ammunition in their cars. They have a rifle, and there's purposes for that, that you know, we live in the age of mass shootings. But we also live in the age of trying to find good solutions to prevent the loss of life. So every car has one of those shotguns, and I passed around the ammunition that is loaded into that. It's a beanbag round that we can use at a greater distance than a taser or other options. And so we used that here a couple of weeks ago, on July 22nd. So if I could get Officer Dodd to come up here with me. Councilwoman Hale, this is one of the folks we poached from over yonder with y'all. Officer Dodd's been with us for a little while, and I'm going to read the citation to you, and I'm going to present to him what you guys have seen me give out only one other time, the Chief's Direct Commendation Award, and this is certainly warranted for it. "On Saturday, July 22nd, 2023, Texas Parks and Wildlife Game Wardens and Aransas County Sheriff's Deputies requested assistance from Rockport Police in the apprehension of a wanted subject who was armed with a knife and threatening to take his own life. The game wardens and deputies were aware that all RPD patrol officers are equipped and trained with shotguns loaded with less lethal beanbag ammunition, which provide greater distance capabilities than other less lethal options. RPD Patrol Officer Justin Dodd responded to the scene near the Port Bay Bridge in Aransas County. We left out of the city by request to go and assist other agencies. They did not have this capability. Upon his arrival, Officer Dodd immediately began to gather necessary information, assess the situation, and take command. Officer Dodd developed a plan and began to engage with the subject. During the interaction, Officer Dodd attempted to de-escalate the situation and convince the subject to drop his weapon and surrender. It was clear that the subject intended for officers to use deadly force against him or to commit suicide by cop." Now, I want to be real clear, let me pause for a moment there. This is a deadly force situation. It's an offender, somebody who has a warrant for their arrest, they're armed with a knife, a pocket knife, but an edged weapon. This is a situation where an officer by themselves would not use this tool. They have to use their pistol. This is a deadly force situation. Fortunately, with other officers present, and by our policy, we will only start down this road with less lethal options if there's deadly force coverage. And there was sheriff's deputies and game wardens on scene who could provide that lethal coverage in case this failed, in case he couldn't deploy it in time, or whatever, so that we're protected, the public's protected, so there's lethal force coverage. While a lot of things fell into place, this award is about Officer Dodd taking command and showing the leadership he did in the field to bring the resolution, his tactical bearing to ensure the safety of all. Officer Dodd maintained control of the situation and communicated effectively with the other law enforcement officers present as he coordinated their approach toward the subject. Soon the subject began focusing on a particular Aransas County Sheriff's Deputy and started moving in that deputy's direction. Officer Dodd was able to quickly move up and fire one less lethal round at the subject from his shotgun from a range of about 24 feet, impacting the subject in his right hip. The subject immediately fell, and at that point, a deputy was able to advance forward and use a taser to fully subdue the subject. At that time, officers were able to safely remove the knife from the subject's hand. Officer Dodd and the deputies were then able to take the subject into custody. Officer Dodd's calm, collective, and disciplined demeanor set the tone for the other law enforcement officers at the scene. He showed a level of leadership in the field where it counts, which was well beyond the normal expectations of a non-supervisory officer. His quick, decisive actions led to the safe apprehension of the subject and greatly mitigated the possibility of any serious bodily injury or death to anyone involved. The paradigm of trading a painful contusion for the loss of human life is the principle of equipping and training police officers with less lethal options. However, it is up to the individual police officer to apply such paradigms to practice. Officer Dodd did just that on July 22nd, 2023. Officer Dodd's outstanding performance during this incident clearly exceeded what is normally required or expected. His actions brought great credit upon himself and the Rockport Police Department and are in keeping with the highest traditions of the law enforcement profession."
See how good he is? Did you see that? We're also training with expert vision. Good job, man.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Check that. Thanks.
Mayor, Council, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. I have a roll call to establish presence of a quorum. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor, here. Next item on the agenda is Citizens to Be Heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed Speaker's Card located at the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the City Secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by four o'clock on the day of the meeting on an agenda item or any subject matter that will be read at the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace, as prohibited by law, shall be cause for the chair to terminate the offenders' time to speak. I have one card on an item not on the agenda. Ken Barron.
The 402 Cascades in the Country Club, my director on the HOA there. I would like to request that the city consider utilizing any leftover funds from this year's budget to implement one or more of the three remaining projects that we're proposing to help eliminate the flooding issue in the Country Club. So if there are any additional funds available, please consider utilizing us for our benefit. The people of the Country Club would appreciate that. And also, I'd appreciate if the City Council budgeted funds in next year's budget to resolve any of the remaining three projects that we're proposing at this time. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Next, I have a couple of items that are on an agenda item. These are from your ward, folks, I think, and I've got one card. If card is from Kristi Rutledge, you would come up, give us your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
I'd like to give a handout to City Council, is that okay?
Comes to me and they give it out.
I'd like to show it to them while I speak on it, during the meeting.
Russell, and it interferes with the pickup for the meeting.
We're talking about the budget.
What do you got?
Just a copy of the budget printed out from ClearGov. I'd like to show it in a format.
We got copies of the budget.
But it's actuals that the council hasn't seen yet. So I'd like to...
We have the official budget presented by the city manager. For purposes of that, we don't need another copy of the budget, but thank you.
Sir, I'd like to take my City Council rep, is that okay?
You can hand it to the city secretary. It can be delivered to whoever it needs to go to after the meeting.
Okay. In this packet, I'm here tonight, there's obviously five items that I'm concerned about, and I'm concerned that I only have three minutes for five items. I don't think this is reasonable, and I don't think it's in compliance with the law. I also don't think it's in compliance with your city ordinance regarding your order of business for city council meetings. So I wanted to get that during the Citizens to Be Heard. I'll make it as quick as possible, but this is an example of why that ordinance is really important to be followed, because tonight you have rate increases for all of our utilities, you have tax increases, and you have budget to discuss. And there's no way reasonable that I, having the detail that I'd like to share with you, I'm going to be able to share that with you for five items in three minutes. So I was precluded from giving you your handouts, but I'll tell you about them. The first page, front and back, is general fund revenues, and what it shows you on the bottom is non-departmental, where zero transfers have been made from the utilities at this time, which is normal, to the general fund for revenues. But you're already at, the city is already at 69% of revenues. So once those transfers are made, you will obviously be way over on your revenues. And then, this is from ClearGov, which is the city's financial transparency site. I know that in the agenda packet tonight, it's fund summaries, but really, the budget is proposed by detail, and you brought up an important one, which is the travel account. There are many areas in the budget that are the details. This builds what we are going to be taxed on, these details, that have not been spent at all, or they've been underspent. This is, I believe, updated on the ClearGov through June, so it's 75% of your budget year has already passed and been updated, the financials to ClearGov. So when you get this, I hope that you look at the details and take this opportunity where we're sort of in budget limbo, you don't know what your tax rate is, and you don't know what your budget is, say no to those items, 18 and 19 tonight, and continue working on the details. Because if it hasn't been spent 50% or more, it should be reduced for next year. And it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be overspending and then just, or overtaxing and overbudgeting and then just holding on to that money for reserves. Also, take a look at your capital improvement plan, your unspent bond money, those projects that were identified for that, have those been spent? Is that money being moved around? He just asked about something important for the Rockport Country Club. So make sure that previously allocated funds have been spent that way or allocated that way, and that we're not being double taxed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rutledge. We have a couple more. Mr. Brundt, I haven't read there, some people in his ward.
Andrew Kane, 2106 Lakeview Drive. Mayor Jarrow, in the 15 months since you have been elected after this budget session, do you realize the spending budget for the city will have gone up 25% plus if you approve this plan? That is shocking. Mayor and council reps, you all are stewards of the citizens' money. Times are hard for the citizens, and you are supposed to represent them, especially fiscally. You do not represent staff, you represent us. Times are hard for everyone in general. Please control your budgets and learn to say no to increases. Don't accept the word of any staff about their needs. They bring wants to you in their budgets, not needs. Cut budgets or at least cap the increases without the increased expenses. This can be done, and it isn't irresponsible to demand a leaner operation. Go without some new requests, new hires and new equipment. Sell off some city assets like excess land and get it on the tax rolls. Start making some fiscally conservative decisions and be the true advocates for the citizens you represent, not just a rubber stamp for what appears to be an overgrown and spend-happy local government. The utilities, which is a monolithic basic health need for the citizens, has been a path for padding nonutility wants and expenses. This robbing of the utility fund to fund other wants needs to stop. It should be illegal. The idea to charge citizens we serve with utilities at a 150% increase over nonresidents is just manipulation and bullying. The comment made at a workshop that if they don't like it, you have an annexation paperwork for them is childish and not the statement of someone that represents the good citizens of Rockport. Council, please step up, make the tough decisions, the right decisions, and stop this tax and spend path y'all have been taking, again, y'all have been taking. Again, 25% increase in budgeted spending over the past 15 months after your rubber stamps are applied is not acceptable. Thank you for serving us, the citizens who will have to pay for this.
Patrick Kane, 1123 East Cedar Street.
City Council, you were lied to by the city manager at Thursday's budget meeting when she told you in the Austin area, out-of-district rate is 1.5x, so it's 50% higher. I guess she didn't think anyone fact-checked her. The city Austin utility rates and fee schedule as of March 1st, 2023, is available online, and it clearly shows they charge the same rate to all customers for trash, water, and wastewater. They even charge out-of-city customers less than in-city customers for electricity. The city does have a legitimate need to cover its costs for administering the utilities, i.e. salaries, facilities, and equipment. The proper way to do this is by accounting for and transferring the administrative cost from the general fund to the utility funds. This ensures the utility is self-supporting, and all of its costs are recaptured through its rates, not through ad-vorm tax subsidies. In fact, the city is already doing this. As shown in the city's budget last Thursday, the Water-Wastewater Fund shows transfers of $556,007 for vehicle and equipment expenses, and $3,688.69 for other operating expenses that include franchise fees and administrative salaries. The Natural Gas Fund shows transfers of $73,638 for vehicle and equipment expenses, and $935,706 for operating expenses to include franchise fees and administrative salaries. The questions you should be asking city manager are whether the city has accurately accounted for its administrative support of the utilities through these transfers. If not, why not? And what would it take to correct? If yes, what is the city's reason for charging a premium rate to its non-city customers? Bottom line is, you should not adopt the 50% rate as premium as it is based on a lie. The city's utilities benefit from having a larger customer base, and all of its customers should be treated equitably. It is time to end the out-of-state, pardon me, it is time to end the out-of-city rate premium.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed or considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone have any quest to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a seconds. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. It's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We'll conduct a public hearing on a proposal to increase solid waste, water, wastewater, and natural gas rates for all customers, and it is 6:50, and we are in a public hearing. Are there those that wish to address this present? If so, after these two items are read, we can do that. Can we read these two first right quick? We'll get to you again, Kristi.
Kathy Kane, 109 Boardwalk Avenue.
I oppose 100% use recharge for nonresidents. What analysis has been completed to justify charging nonresidents a significantly higher rate? The cost to deliver services to outlying areas was paid by the developers or homeowners when they connected to the service for the lines and lift stations. What is the cost comparison to deliver to a home in the Country Club versus Harren Rouge and Fulton? The utility funds should capture all costs within their funds and evenly distribute it to the collective users. If these costs are rising due to new development, the developer should pay for the infrastructure to deliver to their developments, not the current customer base. It is clear the city has a spending problem. The solution isn't to defacture tax nonresidents with an unsupported and unsubstantiated rate premium. My history teachers would consider this taxation without representation. The offhanded remark by the city manager about annexation at the budget meeting is insulting and should be addressed as inappropriate behavior by a city employee. Mary Claire Kane, 38, from Rose Circle. I am a Fulton resident with Rockport provided utilities. I knew something didn't seem right with my water bill. I live alone and have a postage-side-stamped yard, so I'm not using much water. Yet my water bill is higher than my electric bill, even during these hot summer months when my air conditioning is running nonstop. Now I understand why, as you are charging me more than what you charge people who live within the city limits. Why? It doesn't make sense to me, and it isn't fair to do this to someone who can't vote in Rockport elections. You should charge the same rate to all of your residential customers. I am protesting this proposal and expect you to treat everyone alike and not treat us as unwanted stepchildren.
Ms. Rutledge.
presented by an interim city manager in March of 2022, that there would be really large utility rate increases through 2029 in order to support the capital improvement plan. But the city manager's notes to city council this year in the budget said that the natural gas utility is now solvent. So I don't see these utility rate increases necessary. I understand that it does cost more to serve or to add new developments far outside of the city limits, and that's where you have these development fees that you were discussing, and I think those are a great idea. But to penalize existing customers with these massive rate increases is just wrong. And I want to thank the city council representatives, Danielle Hale, Brad Brundt, I believe all of you were concerned about the rate increases, especially natural gas. I have an older home, I, one person in this home, and I have gas, but my city of Rockport utility rate bill is routinely double my electric bill. And now, you know, a $9.55 increase to the natural gas utility would make that a project that's not wanted by anyone, even those that are outside of the city. So it's going to further penalize the citizens that live in Rockport and already rely on that utility. So I say keep the natural gas fund, keep the rates affordable, add more customers, because you're making money at it now, and you are able to subsidize a little bit in your administrative fees. And that's a good thing, because all of you work on those utilities. But it's not a good thing to just take that cow and keep running with it, and just build reserves with it or have that money disappear. As I said, in your budget, you don't need an increase in utility rates, because your general fund budget is already 69% of the revenue collected without those transfers. They haven't taken place yet, and they've gotten larger and larger. So when the natural gas fund was proposed to be sold, I took a look back 10 years at the budget and looked at how many transfers were made to administrative fees, and it's really gotten out of hand, it's not justifiable. As Patrick Kane said, general government accounting practices, you have to justify allocations across departments. If I work for multiple departments, like the city financial director, the city manager, their salary should be allocated a percentage-wise, based on the total revenue from those cost centers. So just randomly...
Thank you, Ms. Rutledge. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? If not, the public hearing is at an end, we're back to a regular session. It is 6:55. Item number 10 on the agenda is deliberate and act on second final reading of an ordinance amending Article IV of the City Rockport Zoning Ordinance, number 1027, by changing the zoning of land from R1, First Single Family Dwelling District for property located at 607 Sunset Drive, also known as Point 3078 Acres, J. Smith Survey, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to R2, Second Single Family Dwelling District, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Anything new from the last time? Any questions from the council regarding this matter? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda item as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, second. Any further question or discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Passing you now. Item number 11, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances 102, Utilities, Article II, Water Service, Division III, Service Charges, by amending water rates for all customers, providing for validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Okay. The rates that we're going to be talking about were already, have been dropped into the proposed budget, and they were discussed at the budget workshops on August 1st and 3rd, wherein staff and council discussed the rates and rate structures to support the budget, debt, service, and capital projects. The rates were adjusted for differences of in-city and out-of-city rates, and if approved, the rates would become effective September 15th and will be reflected in the November 1st billing. I'll start on the water first, if that's all right. On the water rates, inside city limits, what's being proposed is a, oh, sorry, what's driving, one of the things that's driving this is that the San Patricia Water District said to expect about a 20-cent rate increase per 1,000 gallons, and so we had to make some adjustments for that. And anyway, just getting started, looking at the, for the residential in-city limits, base charges, we're looking at about a 30-cent rate increase for most of the tap sizes. It's pretty consistent except for tap sizes of four to six inches. Then also, for any additional gallons, and that includes the first 1,500 gallons, for any additional gallons over 1,500 to 10,000, there's an increase of 20 cents from $5.83 to $6.03. Going above 10,000 to 15,000 gallons used, there is a progressively stepped rate increase from 683 to 703, again, a rate increase of 20 cents. And lastly, anything over 15,001 gallons, another 20-cent step increase. increase from seven seventy-six to seven ninety-six per thousand. On the commercial side, going on commercial in, in city, again, a tap increases, increase about thirty cents for most, most tap sizes except for four and six. The, that also includes fifteen hundred gallons. For any gallons fifteen hundred to ten thousand, there was a twenty cent rate increase from five eighty-three to six oh three, and then anything from ten thousand, fifteen thousand, an increase twenty cents to seven oh three, and then anything over fifteen thousand, it goes to seven ninety-six. Again, progressive rate increases to discourage overuse, that's, that's the purpose of, of that. Outside city limits, just was talked about earlier, the rates basically are increased by one point five times what the inside city rates are, and that is, that goes for both residential as well as commercial, so pretty much across the board. One and a half times what those tap fees were inside is what they're going to be charged outside, as we talked about. Any questions? Okay. Let's see.
Before we move on, I have a couple of things to add. We, right now, are charging one point three six outside of city limits, so raising, raising to one point five. We're already in differentiation, but decided outside of city. I'd like to also address the area rates. So first of all, I said the Austin area, not Austin proper, we have a stack of Austons that are one point five, one point seven five, one of them's four hundred percent, so I'll not go through those, just very all, but I did not lie to you as a council, I don't do that. I said the Austin area, not Austin proper. But if we want to talk about our neighbors, I mean, we did one tap size to compare apples to apples, I did the entire building structure of every neighboring city. Portland is at one point two five, Beville is at one point seven six, George West is at one point five, and Corpus is at one point five, so going to one point five certainly wouldn't be any out of line cost.
We also are not charging that to the additional gallons, on the additional gallons, we're only using, adding the twenty cents, it's only to the base rate that that one point five is applicable. Are there any questions that you guys have?
Those comparable cities are.
They're, the base rate for us to them, how is that compared?
Our base rates are different.
Are we higher or lower?
Let's see. We are higher than Corpus, we're lower than Beville. Let's see, just real quickly. We are higher than George West, but theirs is only for the first five hundred gallons, and ours is for fifteen hundred. Did I say Beville, we're lower? And Portland? Portland, we are higher. But their deposit is higher. We're higher than Portland.
Just, just to confirm, the, the hundred and fifty percent increase is just on the initial usage?
Right, it's not a hundred and fifty percent increase.
I'm sorry, fifty, I'm sorry, fifty percent increase.
It's gonna, it's not a.
Oh, well, no, one, one point three six to one point five, right?
Right, it's gonna be.
Fourteen?
Twelve percent. And it's only applies to the base rate. The fault, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, please, the additional use rates, we only added our pass-through of twenty cents. Nope? Oh, they still did one point five, on the additional. So like, okay, so conservation rate went from eight sixteen to nine oh five, for your first, for up to ten thousand gallons, so it is that, I'm sorry.
Okay, can we take a step back here? So, we had this discussion, obviously, last week, for a good while. Can we just kind of go over a little bit, now that we have gotten some comments from the residents, what was the reasoning for the increase on the rate?
The, this dated reason, I believe, was that they don't pay city taxes to contribute to the other boroughs. And we still have to support the capital, even though it's outside of the city, and we don't collect any tax.
So can I go further, what, my question is, what was the, to go into the capital, so let's explain a little bit more, to go on the capital, even with, if we did the rate increase for just the city? Say, your original proposal was to do a rate increase just for city?
That's correct.
What, what was the reasoning, just to quick explanation of why you thought that was something that needed to be done?
So that is our study from NewGen, that we've been working off of for, I don't know how long, but it's our current study from NewGen, that in order to support the CIP, we needed to go to these rates here, and then we added the twenty cents that San Pat is going to add to us on top of that. So we increased enough to support our CIP, to keep our infrastructure up to date, and then we added the pass-through cost, that's gonna, cost, that's gonna come through from San Pat.
And to my understanding, for us, with our infrastructure, there's quite a few things that had failed even just this last year.
We've, we've got some work to do.
And there's, and if we keep passing, and this is just how it failed, if we keep passing the bucket to every year, what's gonna happen is things are gonna keep failing, and we're not gonna be able to serve those residents if we don't do something about it. My concern is, I understand their concern about raising the rates and doing that, nobody wants to pay more money, I don't want to pay more money. But I also have to worry about how we're gonna be able to support our, our, our infrastructure, our citizens. I mean, how we, how are we gonna be able to make sure they have clean water? How do you make sure our water plant stays up to the code, stays up to, you know, to what their standards are? That is gonna be my concern, and, and I did do research today on other cities that are around us, and it is pretty standard practice to charge the outside city limits between that one and one and a half percent more than what the city limits does. I just, we have to find a resolution, or a solution, to make sure that we can fund things that we have to fix, and not become in the deficit like we had done in the last year. And I just, I don't see another way that we'll be able to go around this. I just, honestly, don't, and if you guys have ideas, great, please give them out, because I just don't see it right now. And that's just, that's my comment on it.
I think that, you know, when we reviewed what the, what the needs were for the system, and across all the utilities, we've got to be able to put some money aside to address the capital program, and I think our conversations about how best to address it, I mean, there was pros and cons to everything that we discussed, and we discussed it for quite a while, so the policy for an inside rate, in an outside city rate is not new, you know, that's not what's being proposed here. It's to continue that and look at how we can fund things. So, you know, I helped propose the, the one point five, I didn't, we didn't have really the number necessarily, but the idea being that it's easier to articulate and clear for the outside city user what, what is going to happen with their rates, so they can project that. Coming back every year and playing this, well, ten cents here, five cents here, you know, natural gas is the same outside city limits, but water's not, that doesn't make sense to me, and so that's why I proposed that we try to make that, I guess, level for all of our utilities, so it's folks that live inside city limits understand what's, what a rate increase is gonna look like, and those that are outside understand what it, what it's going to be. We have issues inside the city limits, we've got a lot of areas that aren't covered by utilities, we've got to start correcting some of these things. This utility rate's not necessarily gonna fix that problem, but it's gonna help us start to chip away at some of the challenges that have created this. So none of us, I don't believe, I mean, I definitely don't want to increase any rates on anyone, but we don't have a choice, the cost of doing business is what it is. So it is, what's up here right now, this is the residential rates, right, for outside city limits is what's showing on there? So approximately three dollars per month increase for those that are outside city limits. It hurts, I mean, you add that up over twelve, twelve months, you add that to the other utilities, we get it. But there's gotta, there's gotta be an increase, it's gotta happen somewhere.
What else?
Yeah, what was able to be accomplished after last year's tax increase with revenue?
I'm sorry, this isn't the, not the tax increase.
No, the utility rate increase.
I don't, what did you, y'all increase last year? What were our capital projects this year, ma'am?
Capital projects for water? We had water line extensions in certain areas around town. We had a couple of large valve replacements. I don't have the list in front of me, but I mean, we have ongoing, regular projects working on the system, on the infrastructure, just related to the, the, the current drainage projects that are going on in old Rockport. Last week, we had to go out and dig up valves and shut the water off to do, move, move some lines for that project, and we, we uncovered some valves that weren't working properly, they had to be replaced, and we found several other items that needed to be worked on. And so that, that's an ongoing process, that's a daily process within the utilities department, is maintaining the system.
Wasn't there, just to correct me, I'm not, wasn't there a couple upgrade, a couple upgrades, because we had a couple of broken pieces in the water, was that anything to do with the utility fund, or was that something separate?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
The, the broken down equipment that you guys had at the water plant?
That's at the wastewater.
That's the wastewater, okay, thank you, I'm just trying to think, sorry, just standing there.
We, we, we have, you know, that each time somebody hits a water line and everything else, we use our money to replace those lines. We do charge it back to the people that did hit it in some cases and such. Sometimes it's us that's going out and doing things, and, and we have accidents, and, or, you know, we do have old infrastructure, old lines and such.
Let me jump in here, I think, I think I understand what you're asking. We do spend regular maintenance money, but the money in the increases is for capital projects, and we have the option to let that fund build up until we have money to do something off of the CIP list that is in your budget, prioritized, or we can take debt based on the new rate. At this point, since I've been here, we've not opted to take debt, so my assumption is that we are waiting to have cash in the water fund to pay for a capital project. We do pull, we do pull when we have a failure, and we do have regular maintenance items that we have to do, but the fund increase, the rate increase, is to fund capital projects. Being that we have opted not to take debt on that, my only assumption is that the thought process would be to build it up. You know, the new water line down Austin Street was going to cost?
About three and a half million dollars.
Three and a half million dollars. So we gotta, we gotta sit on it for a little bit and get some money, and then say, okay, we've got three and a half million dollars, we can do priority one, let's go do priority one.
So based on what can be achieved, assuming there's a surplus of money left from last year's ta, uh, rate increase, and what can be achieved within this year, coming year? Is this tax increase appropriate for what can be accomplished within this period of time?
So you want to, you want to know what can be done this year?
I just wanted, I think the biggest thing is, you know, there's a huge concern for out-of-district increased rates when they don't reap the benefit of, you know, there's a huge increase there, and a lot of these projects are within the city. I just have a concern of increasing the, the rate year after year without gaining the accomplishments of our projects.
So you're right, the majority of them are in the city, but we serve the whole area, so we have an obligation to maintain the entire system. So we have a major water line in Austin Fulton, we're obligated to pull the money and go out there and fix that, you know, and nobody is at fault to fill it back to. So it doesn't matter where the lines are, we still have the same, same obligation to maintain the system to the level of the TCQ that is required. I can't tell you what we, without having the fund balance in front of me, I could probably tell you how much we're gonna, how much we have, how much we're gonna have, and what project we do. I could probably almost tell you that there's not gonna be enough to do a project, we're gonna need to let it sit another year or go take some debt. You know, when one water line down one street is three million dollars, takes a while to kind of build up that much one.
We have, in the past, had occasions when our infrastructure was not maintained, and we didn't have the reserves to take care of things, or we had to do bond issues and all sorts of things to maintain the city's infrastructure. And we owe it to the people who live here to do the very best we can to make sure that the fees they're paying, the taxes they're paying, or whatever, are legitimate and necessary, and that they are reasonably paid. But we can't do that if we get our reserves to the point that when we have serious problems, we can't fix them, and we can't worry with the idea that the infrastructure itself is either maintained or improved at the benefit of the people that live inside the city, because everyone who uses the service gets a benefit from the maintenance of that system. And I don't see any other way that we can get it done.
Can I make one more comment, just to kind of think? So I just wanted, the last year, I know you've gone to a lot of these meetings, the stormwater meetings, you guys, the stormwater meetings, everything, and one thing I've learned, yeah, we're fixing a lot of the city pipes and everything, but all of us are connected, we're a very small area of Ranches County. It's not just the city, it's Fulton, it's the county, we're all connected, so if one thing breaks here, it can affect a whole slew of people down there at the other side of the town. So when you're thinking of it as, well, we're just helping the city population, in reality, it's helping a lot more than you actually think in the long run, is what I would want to say, just, that's, I've learned that with the drainage and how we're trying to fix that in our community, so I just wanted to make that comment on there.
Well, we certainly have an obligation to serve everybody that's hooked into our system to the exact same level. You know, just because you live in the city doesn't mean you get, you get better water than you get outside the city, it all has to be maintained the exact same regardless of where you live. If you're on our system, you get the best that we can give you.
Other questions or comments?
Mayor, just, you know, not, I mean, there, there were a few citizens who attended our budget workshops, and, and we were, I don't know what, twelve, thirteen, fourteen hours just last week. This utility rate that's being proposed is not what the original staff recommendation was. I mean, we, we whittled this down already. There may be some opportunity to continue to, to do that, but this is, if I recall correctly, Vanessa, I'm looking towards you, and our finance director, this is significant, or I don't want to say significant, it's probably not the right word, but this is substantially lower than what was originally proposed to it. So, you know, I, I get it, you know, we're being, you know, there's citizens who think that we're not doing enough, and we're just doing whatever staff tells us. I don't think that's true at all, based on the conversations that happened at the budget workshop, and, and the rate that we're proposing now is not where we were a week ago.
You guys did not want to meet the NewGen rate, you asked us to, to curl it back from there.
One more thing, Mayor, Ed.
Robbie, if you could re, restate the, the math, so it's currently out-of, out-of-district, out-of-city limits, one point three six?
That, yeah, that was mine.
Or one point three eight, I'm sorry.
One point, one point three six.
One point three six.
And we went to one point five.
Going to one point five. And the, the one, the numbers we're seeing on the screen here, those do reflect that one point five percent increase, or?
It does.
The new rate at one point five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve agenda, item number eleven, as read.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion or question? Now we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
One, one last comment. Clarify our next process from here, this is first reading, so next reading is in two weeks? So we still have the opportunity to receive additional public comment? And still consider any changes, thank you.
Thank you. Ward one?
Nay.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, four to one, passes. Item number twelve, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, one oh two, Utilities, Article Three, Wastewater Service, Division Four, Service Charges, by amending wastewater rates for all customers, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all ordinances.
repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Yes, sir?
Starting on wastewater then, uh, wastewater inside city limits residential, a small increase, very small increase, uh, from 2306 to $23.35. That also includes the first 1,500 gallons of water. Same, same percentage increase, uh, for the, uh, one inch or larger, uh, price or rate, excuse me. Additional gallons over 1,500, uh, from 1,500 to 5,000, uh, that is a six cent increase. Again, much smaller than what we saw in water. And additional gallons over 5,000, uh, it's seven cents, uh, again, progressive, progressive, progressively stepped to encourage conservation. Non-residential, uh, inside city limits, uh, commercial, uh, same percentage increase, very, very small between the different tap sizes, um, for all gallons. And, and that also includes 1,500 gallons, uh, 1,501 gallons up, up to 5,000. Uh, they, it's a six cent increase from 428 to 434. For gallons over 5,001, uh, it's seven cent increase from, uh, $5.02 to, uh, $5.09. Outside city limits, again, what we were just talking about, uh, basically it's 1.5 times that of the inside city limits, uh, for both, uh, water, for, for both residential, outside residential and outside city limits commercial. The, the main difference on the outside city limits, uh, certain on water, is the, is the additional gallons used. Uh, those are, are much smaller increases. It's only 50, 54 cent increase from 597 to 651. And from 5,000 to 15,000 gallons, it's from, uh, 58 cents, uh, 705 to 763. Let's see. There's also a table in there talking about persons who are not hooked up to, uh, full-time to municipal water system. Uh, and it shows what the inside city limits, uh, increase, increases are. Again, they're, they're very small as compared, as compared to the outside city limit increases, which, um, are about 12.7% for residential, non-residential. And for commercial, it's, uh, it goes up to 14%. Any questions?
Mayor, Vanessa, do you have the rates for, for wastewater?
I don't think I do. I didn't pull them. I just grabbed them. I did, cause that was the easy one. Let me see. If I have anybody that I can get on wastewater.
Robbie, do you know what our, our outside city limits rate is right now? Is it, uh, 1.36 as well? For wastewater?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yes, water and wastewater are both the same, 1.36. This is all I, all I pulled is water. Well, here's sewer. Outside of the city, Portland sewer. Inside is 17, 16, outside is 31, minimum charge, 355 per thousand gallons. So that's gonna end up at the same, probably, let's be though, probably about the same, 1.76. I'm no map proficient, but, um, I think you want Johnson City. Headquarters somewhere. Oh, I don't have it. So that's the only, um,
Wastewater.
Wastewater one I have, just because it's on the sheets that I pulled for water. But right now, we're at the same, 36% over 1.1, so 1.36, and we're proposing the same increase.
With water and wastewater?
New development that comes in, and I know we have an op, that we have a fee study that's out there, uh, a fee, an impact fee study that's in, in progress. Can we discuss, or is this, uh, inappropriate time to discuss the contributions to the, to these funds? So, so in, in order to?
We wanna offset these fees? Because that only happens if you get a development.
If you get, it's so, new develop, new development will, will, uh, help pay for, for the increased, uh, usage, correct?
A new development will help pay for increased usage. A new development theoretically should play, pay for its increase, yes.
Correct. We're not just passing the cost all off on existing customers.
We, we need to not be. Certainly, our fee study will reflect if we are, but no, anything new should pay for itself. That's the, that's the goal.
Other questions?
Just to kind of get back there, but with our, we, we're not collecting impact fees right now.
We are collecting impact fees.
But we can't use them.
We can't use, at our, which is from when? When was the last time we, we implemented? So we're collecting the 1999 rate, but we cannot use them because we're not compliant.
Until we're compliant, we cannot use them.
That's correct.
So, and that's gonna take about a nine-month to a 12-month study for us to complete that, to even collect on those. And until we can start, or using those, I should say, sorry, let me back up. So the next year, we have to figure out a way, cause we can't, we can't, you know, know what's gonna be coming in and what's gonna be paying.
That's right. So when we do that study, it will give us the CIP and tell us where to spend those funds. But, yes.
But we still have a year out before we can do that.
That's correct. That's correct.
So we're kind of still in the same boat as the water, until we can get that, that situation fixed, is what I'm hearing.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you think this is a, a stop to bleed? Or is this a, uh, a Band-Aid fix until we get that impact fee, uh, updated?
No, I think this is the, the trend of the cost of serving and maintaining the system. The impact fee study, yeah, it's gonna help, but there's still, you know, this is what basically we need to operate today, to keep the system functional today. An impact fee study is gonna come through with more capital improvement things that we need to do. And if this offsets that, fantastic. But we already have a CIP list that's in, not super new, but that we're working towards. And so we're just gonna get more CIP when we get our study done.
Mayor, again, I think it's just, just for clarification, again, this is, this is a reduction from the original staff recommendation. It's reflective of an attempt to, keep the wa, the, the rate increases consistent between inside and outside. It's not a new policy for outside city limits, um, but it is a rate adjustment for, for that. You know, I, it, it's, we hate to, to increase the rates. Um, I definitely do. But, um, we've gotta keep working on things and we've gotta, we've gotta write a lot of things that were neglected for a long time. And I think this gets us, um, headed in the right direction. Uh, still more work to be done.
Okay.
Again, this is just the first read. So I myself would just like to have a little bit more time, but I know that there are improvements that are absolutely necessary that we have to, um, hone in on. Um, we just need to,
I know that at the time, originally, way back years ago, when we first talked about impact fees, the main purpose with impact fees, when somebody comes in with a development, whether it's commercial or residential, and it puts a new burden on the water system, the wastewater system, or whatever, then that system is at, in danger of failing if we don't see to it that they pay upfront, something to help maintain that, that system or that particular part of our infrastructure, so that it doesn't fold because of added requirements to it. And I know that it would be, it would be terribly beneficial if we had large residential areas come in in a hurry and that, and that fees could be collected to assure that the system would work. But my recollection at the time was that when your wastewater treatment plant gets to about 80%, you're required to start building on to it again. And you have to be prepared for that. And we can't wait hoping that we get several large-scale residential construction companies coming in to build new projects out there and we can catch up then, because we can't wait. At the point we get to 80%, we've gotta do something. We're not close to that now, but it is still a requirement. So we need to be ready for that. And doing something like this, as distasteful as it may be in a lot of areas, it's necessary to see that the city's infrastructure remains working for, for everyone that lives here. And the ones that perceive the service outside the city. Anything else?
Mayor, I make a motion to, um, approve first reading for gen, item 12 as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further question or debate? Now I'll call for a vote, ward one?
No.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, passes four to one.
On that, if you guys would like to, um, give us some, some proposals or some feedback, we can run numbers, you know, in the next two weeks and kind of look at what all of those look like.
We have been going for an hour. We're gonna take a 10-minute break for those that need one. And we will come back at 20 minutes until eight. We're on break.
Hour already? We're just starting to have fun. This lighting in this room. This lighting in this room wreaks havoc on me.
I, I have, I read a thing. (pause) 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 Ten minutes is up. We're back in session. Item number thirteen, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Utilities, Article Five Natural Gas Service, Division Three Service Charges by amending natural gas rates for all customers, providing for validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Yes, sir, Mr. Soro.
Okay, thank you. Okay, getting started, natural gas rates inside city limits. It was a proposed modest increase of about a dollar for the base, for the base charge. And the usage and gas, there was, there's no, they don't give you any, any free usage. The, the usage rate on that is going from, is increase of about twelve and a half percent from three dollars and thirty-four cents to three point seven six per cubic foot. Natural gas rates proposed to Town of Fulton, base charge increased eleven dollars from thirty dollars, thirty dollars and eight cents to forty-one oh eight. And usage charge of, again, twelve and a half percent increase from three dollars and thirty-four cents to three dollars and seventy-six cents. Last is gas rates for the unincorporated areas of Aransas County. That would be an eleven-dollar, eleven-dollar increase for the demand charge. And then I believe that's also a twelve and a half percent increase for, for usage from three thirty-four to three seventy-six. Any questions on those?
So just to note here, there typically was no difference in...
There typically was, historically has not been a difference in in-city and out on gas rates. And you guys said put one dollar on in and eleven on out. So that would be that, basically that same increase. Just to note that you don't have a difference now.
Questions?
Mayor, my esteemed counsel compadres, let me draw this number at workshop. And that was just a, a shot from the hip. So I, I would be, the, the in, the in-city limits rate, the dollar increase, I think, covers some of the things we, we need to cover. But the out of, the, the Town of Fulton and the Aransas County, I, I'd like to re-look at that. I just kind of threw out a dartboard there of that number. I do think that's quite a substantial increase. That's all I needed to say about that. And that, that's my fault why that number's on there because I throw it out there, but...
I agree, it's your fault, Brad.
Thank you, thank you.
No, so, well, I think for this first year that it, it may be a little excessive, but I'm, I'm remembering the graphs, right? So we were trying to kind of normalize by percentage across the board. And if I remember correctly, this was the one that, that would have the biggest gap to make up since there wasn't historically an out-of-county or out-of-city rate. So maybe we look at bringing it down a little bit, kind of helping, let's get us through into the next year. And then if we're still in the natural gas business, continue to increase. But if we're going to keep this one-point-five model, this one's the one that's going to hurt the most out of the, out of the three or four services that we provide, if I remember correctly. So your number wasn't, wasn't wrong, and we did pester you to come up with a number, but it, it was, I'm coming to your aid a little bit.
Thank you.
It was rational based on what we were trying to do for all of them. I, I, I gave him a little lifeline. I had to.
Is that number, I mean, obviously, we can propose whatever number you would like, but is there, not you would like, we can propose whatever number. But is there, is there still some flexibility in that out of, out of, out of city limits rate?
So I would say the in-city limits rate probably is packed, but the out-of-city limit, I believe, um, the amount that we proposed, okay, so we proposed thirty, nope, hold on, yeah, yes, thirty-nine sixty-four for the in-city rate. So we backed that in-city rate down eight dollars and whatever math that is. And then you guys were going to make it up in the out-of-city, and I think that was the logic there. So the, what y'all presented last year, the necessary to support the five-to-ten-year CRP, CIP, had us doing a twelve-dollar-and-ninety-cent rate increase to thirty-nine sixty-four across the board. So you can read the flexibility in that.
Mm.
I mean, that's going to be a big hit.
If I remember correctly, you said that you would be comfortable going down a little bit on that rate.
Absolutely.
What was, did you happen to get a number that would be comfortable for you to go down to?
Um, I, I think we could, we could take, take that one-point-five and split it over three years is, so a third of the increase, basically. Again, I'm not going to map that right here. You never do math in public, but, you know, if we divide that over three years, then that's a, that's a more, um, powerful bite.
Since they were historically the same.
Right. So you're jacking them all the way up to the one-point-five this year, you know, whereby on the other one, you're, you know, you're giving them a little bit of an increment right here, you're giving them a whole bite. So I think if we split it into thirds, do the increment, take a third of the increment.
What I'm looking, or hoping for is that, you know, we kind of discussed at, at the workshop was the rate that we, if we are in the, the opportunity to sell the, the gas company, we want the rate to be not artificially low, but something that is...
And that's why we're going with the thirty-one oh eight, because that gives us the room to negotiate a rate potentially in a safe, not that it would be, but that is an option.
But I don't want that rate at the out-of-city limits to be so high, or be it a rate that that potential purchaser comes in and says, oh, they're, they're comfortable paying this, then...
Dude, you threw out the number.
I know, I did. That's my fault.
You know, if we did, if we did thirty-four oh eight...
Don't do math in public.
We're not going to do math in public. The number on the new budget sheet you have in front of you calculates in this rate. So anything you back off of this, back off of that. How about that?
So if we did the out-of-city rate over three years, would we need to increase the proposed in-city rate this year to meet our requirements?
Oh, yeah. Oh, wait, hold on. No, if you do, well, because you didn't do the thirty-nine sixty-four, um, your next rate increase was not scheduled for twenty, until twenty-eight, twenty-nine. But since we didn't do the whole thirty-nine sixty-four, you're going to have to make that up theoretically. I mean, this isn't the Ten Commandments carpet stone. You theoretically need to make this up and the traction you've lost by not going the whole rate before twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So...
I, I don't want to kick the can down the road, but I think it's, it's prudent to look at it as smaller bites than one big chunk. Some of my thoughts.
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven thirty would be one-point-two times, one-point-two. Instead of one-point-five, it'd be one-point-two times. I don't know the difference in the, how it's going to calculate for the revenues, because there's, there's a difference between in and out of county, how many customers we have. So I don't know how well it'd be revenues. But if you take the thirty-one oh eight and do it one-point-two times, because if you want to break it out to... Eventually be one-point-five. To eventually be one-point-five, the one-point-two would be thirty-seven and thirty cents. That's still a big chunk.
One more time, I'm sorry, thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven and thirty cents instead of forty-one oh eight. Now, if you want to do thirty-nine sixty-four, you can do it across the board. I'm just throwing that out there.
We're just, we're talking about the outside.
Say that again?
We're talking about the outside numbers right now.
That's correct. This thirty-nine sixty-four, though, would be the same for in and out if you adopted this number. It wouldn't, there wouldn't be a differentiation between the two. There wouldn't need to be.
You're right.
I'm not suggesting you do, believe me, that's, that's an incredibly high number.
I'm trying to map.
Don't do it. So maybe, this is not even the one-and-a-half times. The thirty-one oh eight at one-point-two times is forty-six. Even forty-one dollars is not at the one-and-a-half times.
Mm-hmm. But it's still a substantial increase.
Why don't you let us back it down to thirty-five, thirty-five oh eight, and let's look at what that does to the revenue, what that does to the capital, um...
For the utility, for that, that fund, natural gas fund?
Yeah. Let us back it down to the thirty-five, and, and we'll, we'll give it a look there.
For outside.
For the outside of city. So basically four dollars over what the city is, is paying.
We'll keep the...
Keep the in-city at thirty-one oh eight and put the out-of-city at thirty-five oh eight.
Mayor, can I make a, a motion on that?
If there are no other questions related to what we're trying to do, you certainly can. Anyone else have anything you would like to say before we take some action here?
All right, Mayor, I move to approve the in-city rate at the thirty-one oh eight and the out-of-city rate for Fulton and Aransas County to thirty-five oh eight.
Do I have a second?
Andrew, Andrew second.
Andrew, second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I second.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Statements?
Just clarification again, it's first reading.
Yes.
Okay.
If not, I'll call for a vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighty-two, Solid Waste, Article Two, Refuse Collection, Section eighty-two thirty-nine, Fee Schedule, Setting New Fees for Service, Repealing All Prior Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing for Publication and an Effective Date. Yes, sir, Mr. Soro.
Uh, we contract with Republic Services to handle solid waste needs, and we received a statement from them of saying that there was going to be a four percent increase in the base commercial rates becoming effective September fifteenth, and would be reflecting on the November, November first billing. We operate that essentially as a pass-through, but it, but they, they send us a bill, and we basically bill, bill the customer. And so we would want, we would want to mimic that as much as possible. And they did not recommend any increase for residential customers, but with the four percent, we are asking that the commercial ninety-six-gallon cart rate be increased four percent from thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents to thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Through our, through negotiations with Republic, we are able to, to maintain our level for residential.
Right.
Small increase for commercial.
That, that was the, the offer for, for signing a four-year contract, that they would keep the CPI this year alone for the customer, for the residential the same, but they needed to do the pass-through on the commercial. We're not increasing our, um...
Please.
We're not increasing our administrative fee on this, just the actual amount that they're increasing for us.
Other questions?
I move to approve item fourteen as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Call for a vote, Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous. Item number sixteen, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh two Utilities, Article Two, Water Service, Division Two Connections, Section one oh two, as four-one, Rates for Water Taps, Meter Installation, Article Three, Wastewater Service, Division Three, Connection Fees, Section one oh two dash two forty-six, Schedule of Fees, By Amending Installation Tap Meter Fees When a New Connection Has Been Made to the City System or Systems Providing for the Validity of Said Ordinance, Repealing All Prior Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing for an Effective Date. Mr. Donohue?
Mayor?
Fifteen.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, but we can go ahead. Or we can do sixteen.
Okay.
Can you do sixteen first?
Yes.
We'll read number sixteen.
You just read it. You read sixteen instead of fifteen.
I did, I read the second half of it. Okay. Whichever one you're supposed to do, do it.
Yes, sir. This is item number sixteen. This is the tap fees related to water and wastewater. And the tap fees that we currently charge are insufficient to cover our costs for the material and equipment. The attached ordinance includes the current supply and labor cost for the meter sets and the tap fees. And we can go through it if you'd like. If you look on the rates for water taps and meter installation, they're charged by the line size and the meter size. For a three-inch tap, our current fee is one thousand eight hundred dollars, and we're proposing to increase it to two thousand four hundred dollars. For a one-inch, for a one-inch tap, it was, our current fee is nineteen hundred dollars, and we're proposing to go up to two thousand five hundred dollars. And anything larger than that is based on current labor and material. Anything that is oversized or is of excessive depth, or anything that requires a bore across the road, we charge those fees back to the developer. We don't have the capacity or, or the ability to do the large bores or the large lines or something that had increased depth. Anything over about six to eight feet exceeds our capability. We don't have the machines to dig that deep. We do have trench boxes to protect our employees, but we don't usually work at extended depths. The meter set fee is for installation of the meter itself, and when a new connection has been made and the actual tap and meter box has been provided by the owner agent, if you look the three-quarter inch, our current fee was four hundred and fifty dollars. We're proposing to go to six hundred dollars. For a one-inch, it was five hundred dollars, and we're proposing to go to seven hundred. And again, anything over an inch and a half is based on current material and labor cost. This is something we've been working on for a few years to make sure that we're, we're recouping our costs. Each time we go out and we, we set a meter or we do a tap, we're losing money. And so we're just trying to get equal, and again, we add a little bit of administrative fee to cover our cost. And on the wastewater taps, a four-inch tap was two thousand one hundred dollars. We're proposing to go to two thousand seven hundred dollars. And the fee for a four-inch water tap at two thousand seven hundred dollars, any wastewater tap services that needs to be made will be determined by the Public Works Director and/or his representative to determine whether or not we need to contract out for any of those materials or labor costs because of the depth. And that, that's where we're at with those. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, but this is just basically to recover our costs for the services that we provide. And we do work with local contractors, like I said, on a regular basis. Whatever we can do, we will do, but we cannot work at excessive depths, and we're not going to put our employees in danger.
Mike, how does this affect any current projects that are in the queue? Like, when does, when does this come into, into play?
Once this, this is first reading, once we go to second reading and everything else, then a new fee schedule will apply. Anything that comes in after that date, the new, the new fee schedule would apply. So if somebody is already in the queue, they'll pay the current fees.
Okay. Okay, no, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to be retroactive for anything that you already have work...
They already have work orders on.
No, we, we can't go back and charge someone extra for something that we're, we're doing now.
The tap fee is, is charged when they pull a building permit?
Yes.
The wa, the water, water and sewer tap?
Water sewer tap.
We, things that are already in line, developments that are already in line, if they're, if they're not, if they're not ready for, uh, hookup.
When they come in to pu, to, to do their project, whenever they come in the door, they'll pay the fee that's current when they come in. But if they're in the queue right now, they, you know, they've already come in, we've got some that have already paid their fees, we just haven't gotten to them yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other question?
So I think that conflicted with what Danielle just asked, am I wrong?
No.
I don't think so.
So if you're planning and you build four houses, you pay the old fee, but when you come in to get the next one?
You pay the, the new fee, yeah. When they come in, when they come in.
I think it was clear for me.
I was thinking the whole subdivision.
Yeah, no, 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 so they've already. Yeah, I get it, the work may not have been done yet, but it's committed already.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Clarification, this is item number sixteen.
Sixteen, yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
I've moved to approve item sixteen as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number fifteen, deliberate an act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh two, Utilities, Argus, Article five, Natural Gas Service, Division two, Connections, Section one oh two dash five one seven, Rates for Natural Gas Tap Meter Installation, By Adding Additional Meter Sizes and Amending Installation Tap Meter Fees When a New Connection Has Been Made to the City System, Providing for the Validity of Said Ordinance, Repealing All Prior Ordinances in Conflict There With and Providing for an Effective Date, Mike?
Same thing, uh, this is the tap fees related to natural gas and our current fees are insufficient to cover the cost of material and equipment. Uh, the increase will, of course, support the cost of materials and labor. If you look down, uh, if you look at the meter size, I, I'm just going to, you know, uh, basically say, we've got four meter sizes, you can call them, uh, small, medium, large, and extra large, if you will, depending on the needs of the customer. Most residential meters are the R-two-seventy-five. Our current cost is one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, we're proposing to go up to sixteen hundred dollars. A medium-sized ma, meter was one thousand three fifty, we're looking to go up to one thousand nine hundred. What I would call a larger meter is three thousand three hundred dollars, and that is not a change. And the R-one thousand is what I call the extra-large meter, that's three thousand eight hundred dollars. And non-standard meter taps or installations of additional mainline length or road bores, meter relocation, or whatever, will be charged back to the customer at, at current rates. And, uh, some of those things, again, road bores and those kinds of things will be done by additional contractors, and the, the customer will bear that cost. Okay.
Mike, the twenty-feet change, will that, um, will that cover most residential installations?
Yes, it will. Yeah, most, most of this is residential installations, the, the two larger ones. Uh, I look at the, the, what I would call the, the large meter, or places like, uh, some of the banks have the larger meters, some of your retail stores have the larger meters, and then you get into the bigger places. I know Walmart has an extra-large meter, I know the swimming pool has an extra-large meter.
My apologies, Mike, the clarification between the change in the fifty feet to the twenty feet, will twenty feet still get most residential?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
That's what I was speaking.
We're no longer, the city no longer does the line on the residential side. We were doing that in the past, where we actually went out and installed the line from the, the meter to the house. We don't, we don't do that, we don't work on private property, so they get a plumber now that comes in and does that. But we've supplied, we're supplying the, uh, the first twenty feet now.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve item fifteen, fifteen as presented.
Good second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number seventeen. Over here, be sure I have the right. Deliberate an act on approval of change order number six related to the new City Hall project, Kimberly.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor and Council, and just in case there's any questions I can't answer for you, Teal is online on Zoom and can assist us. Uh, this consists of three items. The first being the changes in electrical and data boxes, so they may have placed them in a certain spot and we asked them on the diagrams, don't put them there, we want them here. So there was, um, a total of thirty-four thousand dollars and some change for those requested changes. Uh, there was also, uh, we moved some doors, removed a door downstairs and added two doors upstairs, and, um, so that was a total change of twenty-six hundred dollars. And then the savings for us was the exterior handrails. So, um, the changes were to utilize on the whole downstairs area, all the handrails outside would be similar to, would now be similar to what we're using at the police department. The upstairs will stay, um, the way they were anticipated, and I'm not going to get into powder coating aluminum and things of that nature that are outside of my wheel well. Um, however, Mike, uh, and, um, the others, you know, a little bit more understanding of, of those terminologies. The total savings, excuse me, the total between the three items is an additional ten thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents. This is still within our, um, requested, uh, revenue funds. We still have a delta of just over a hundred thousand dollars. So it is within budget, it does not take us over budget.
Great. Questions, Council?
Can we go to the first thing you said, the electrical boxes? I just want to, clarification, you said that you had asked them to put them in a certain spot, but then they didn't, so like, we're keen to change it?
No, the, let me rephrase how, I apologize, ma'am. Their diagram, they're written in a certain way, and then we came in and said, wait a second, this isn't working for us, especially in the MDF IDF rooms. Uh, we were changing things, um, also in, um, uh, if we were changing where cameras or, um, door, door locks and things of, of that, security things, we made changes too.
So it just wasn't working for you guys from originally what it was, okay?
Or didn't make sense.
Didn't make sense, okay. It just, the way you worded it, sorry.
I apologize.
It's okay.
My miswording.
Just want to make sure, clarify that.
Look, to that, much like building a house, we, we got our plans and we, we build it and we look at it and we say, I, electrical outlet, that doesn't work right there, I need to move it just a little bit over. So that's, that's what our change order is essentially.
Yes, sir.
For that.
Other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Uh, I make a motion to approve, um, agenda item number seventeen for the change order number six related to the new City Hall project.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further questions, Mike? Call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Number eighteen, deliberate an act on presentation proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget.
Mayor and Council, if you know, um, I am required by Charter to present you a budget tonight, there's a budget in your packet, um, and I think my three budget letters are in there as well, but, um, you guys know what we're facing. Oh, no, the budget letter is in there. Um, so this is the budget that I'm required to present to you. It needs to be noted that our certified tax rolls are not in, so this is not finalized. The other things that are not included in there are, we, um, oh, well, I gave you all the handout and that's going to be the most up-to-date, over and under, um, of all of the funds. We pushed off the, um, vehicle equipment maintenance for one year out of the general fund because the V and E, um, surplus reserves can handle it for this year, especially since we've got a bunch of new vehicles, we don't anticipate having a bunch of maintenance on those, so we pushed that off one year. We just did a couple of other line items here and there. This is just the over and under, I'll ask Robbie to email you all the detail tomorrow. Additionally, what is not in here is we discussed one-time payments for, um, employees. The department heads have been asked to find that in their budget, so it should be neutral, but it just needs to be noted that it's not in here. I think that's everything. Other than the change you made tonight, yes, good point, we have to put the new fees in, yes, sir?
We, we eliminated all transfers from utility fund and general fund across the board. We, we needed to do that to get it where we are there.
On V and E? Only?
Uh, utilities and general.
Okay.
Any transfers from those two V and E were.
Okay.
Had been eliminated or to the president.
I'm sorry, I left out that. So at this point, we would have to take fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from reserve as opposed to the eight hundred thousand we started with. We're going to continue to hustle, this won't be your final budget. We get certified rolls in and it'll look a little bit different. Hopefully not much, hopefully they, they did some pretty good accurate predictions. But, uh, we'll keep everybody posted and we'll keep everything posted as we have new documents for you guys, um, in the coming weeks. Just if you get an email, do not reply on, please.
The net to talk us through the process, so folks have clarity on what our next steps are and the timeline for us to continue to review and provide input on the budget.
So our, our budget has to be, you have to tell them, it was just adopted by, I think, the second meeting in September. So we will have to, tonight, you have to set a pu, set a public hearing for the proposed tax rate. You are not setting the tax rate, you are taking a vote to set a public hearing. So that will be at the next, Council meeting, Teresa?
With the vote on the.
Tax rate?
Oh, no, the public hearing on the tax rate is on the September.
September.
The vote on the tax rate is not until the Sep, the.
Second meeting in September?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll have the public hearing, the first meeting in September, and then we'll vote on the tax rate and the budget in the second meeting. Um, I don't think there's any more active, um, scheduled items. Like I said, we'll, we'll email back and forth, we'll keep you updated as we get things. I don't anticipate us making any more changes, though, until, um. Public hearing September fifth, yeah. I don't anticipate us making a bunch more changes until we get certified rolls in. It wouldn't be a, a very good use of our time. I mean, we're still trying to whittle numbers and play with some things here and there, but major changes, we've got to get those rolled in, so.
And that was August twenty-fourth, you're expecting?
August twenty-fourth is when they anticipate having it to us, and then we'll have the public hearing on September fifth.
That's a special meeting.
Special meeting, yes, good point.
Did you have any more?
Do we have, do we have any wiggle room in there still? Uh, should we need to adjust, uh, with, uh, special meetings, uh, the timing line between the fifth and second?
Yes.
Second meeting in September? Should we have to call another special meeting for any changes?
As long as nothing has to be advertised in the paper, depending on what the purpose of your special meeting is. Yes, there, there is wiggle room. And I'm not hu, not hutch, yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to kick the can, but after we have the appraisal rolls, I think we'll have a more clear direction. If there's something that you, you need to discuss or want to be brought up, you have another meeting in August, so get all your questions out, let's, let's throw them on the table and see what we can do. And let's use this few weeks that we're waiting as our wiggle room. You know, you put on the, on the table what you want to talk about or what we need to consider, and then we'll.
I don't want to overstep my boundaries, but Robbie and I, when we talked to Anna at the appraisal district, once we publish that proposed tax rate.
Right.
You change your mind, the time clock starts over.
You have to start over.
And everything, and there is not enough time to start that clock over because of legal requirements about seven days before, or five days before, and all this regular road that you have to do before a budget is adopted. Robbie and I looked at it carefully, because of these delay in certified tax rolls, but yet we're being held on feet to the法律 by law.
So, so Anna's going to be, Anna's going to be having it posted in the paper about the proposed tax rate?
That goes in Saturday's paper.
This Saturday?
That's Saturday's paper.
How can?
So how do we change it then, if, if we get tax roll, the certified tax rolls back?
Start over.
But do we have time to do that?
What do we do?
Well, I mean, you can still make changes within the budget, you just can't raise more revenue than, without reposting it under the tax rule, under the tax.
So we can still adjust the tax rate?
No, not the tax rate, you can adjust the budget.
Want to get raised more revenue, we'll get any of certified rolls?
Then you can have, you, you can have.
Just start over?
Start over, yeah.
Do you all hear that?
No, because.
Okay, so we can, even after it's posted, we can make adjustments in the budget, but we can't raise more revenue than our posted tax rate. If her certified rolls cause us to raise more revenue, we have to start over.
So I know the workshop we had talked about, um, trying to shift it into, um, a lower tax rate, and it was suggested to go to start high, so we had that wiggle room, but this now that it changes that, correct?
Not an option, we have to, we have to have the hearing on the rate that we want to propose. We thought it was a not to exceed, it is not a not, it is a not to exceed, but it's on the one we intend to adopt. So you can go lower than that one, I guess, you just can't go above it.
So if we, if we, wow, okay, so if we move to approve, or with, uh, take a vote today for the, the proposed property tax rate for twenty-three, twenty-four, are certified? No.
All we're extending is accepting a proposed budget and we will have a workshop on the fifth, where we.
There is no action to be taken on the budget, you're receiving it, thank you very much. And then the next one, you're setting the public hearing.
Okay.
And, but we can change it up to that date, like on the fifth, after the public hearing? Because we'll have our certified rolls by then.
Yeah, but, uh, I'll have to look at the statute or the notice required.
This is unprecedented.
My, my confusion is, is if we get our certified tax rolls and we generate more revenue than anticipated.
We can go down.
Yeah.
But we can't go up.
We can go down, we just can't go more.
That's correct.
Okay. I think I feel better about that then.
You feel better about that, I'm worried about a tank and I'm just not having that. But that's okay, we have different.
You guys stay positive. Did you guys go back and, there was three things that we had, um, asked to go look at the, um, and had the departments, the, the overtime, the travel, and the contracted services? Was that gone back and looked at and seen?
We have not made any adjustments there.
Right.
We will, it'll be in there, I promise. Most of our contracted services is either anticipatory for Mike's, um, for Mike's emergencies, or it's already allotted for a public service and, and contracts that we've signed at, for IT and some public service. So I don't see a lot of wiggle room in there, but we'll be happy to look at it, the rest of it, absolutely. Did you all hear that? Listen, they're going to go give it a look. It'll be in the next iteration that you're sending via email.
I think, um, Mayor, I, I think we need to go ahead and, and ask staff to place an agenda item on our next council so that we can deliberate and discuss. I'm totally confident you're going to send us emails and you're going to keep us updated, and we're good on that, but I think it's imperative that we discuss it publicly where we're at on, on the process, even if it's.
Even if it's no change, it's no change. I just have to by law present you this tonight.
Absolutely. Knowing we've got one more regularly scheduled meeting before we're going to go to the special meeting, we just know we need to discuss it.
Right, we may be changes Thursday, the package will be out on Friday. I mean, everybody's been hustling, we're not just ignoring what you said. We're just hustling, but absolutely, it should be on the next, next agenda.
Which again is on the fifth of September for a public hearing.
September fifth will be the public hearing, but we'll put it on the August twenty-fifth, fourth?
Okay.
Agenda for discussion again.
Okay.
To twenty-second?
Twenty-second. It'll be there.
Okay.
So, so process, today's all about process, Mayor, my apologies. So we are not accepting your budget, we are just simply acknowledging by action that you have given it to us, which is required of your charter.
You're, you're accepting it. You're, you're accepting it. You are not adopting it. You are acknowledging the fact that I handed you a budget today.
She proposed a budget, we took it.
That's it, I'm just going to make it abundantly clear.
Okay, so we're not proving any, we say we got it.
I'll make the motion, no acknowledging receipt, nothing.
We don't make a motion.
Well, it says deliberate and act, so we have to act on it.
Thank you very much.
That's it. That's good enough. Keep going.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have number nineteen.
Just real quick.
Whatever it is.
Decision that you would send, that you're going to send us a little?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, yes, this updated sheet right here that you had?
Yes.
Robbie will send you the backup to that if you would like it. Or would you like to wait until there's the rest of the changes that you have?
As soon as you can give me information, the better.
That's what I'm thinking. We'll keep you in the loop. So he will send you the backup to this tomorrow. I just didn't feel the need to print it all out again. But we'll send it to you.
But we've still gotta do this rate change that was presented tonight for gas? And then whatever.
So, right, so there'll be a lot of things that are affected. The rate change that you just made for gas, we have to put that in for revenues. We have to revisit those. We have to do the one-time payments to the employees yet. We have to figure out the law. I mean, what are we gonna do? We don't know. We've never, we've never been in this situation. So we still have a lot up in the air, but it will come into clearer focus the closer we get. And I won't leave you in the dark or without information. If I do, send me an email. I'll get you whatever you want.
And this is happening all across Texas, correct?
Yes.
A few, yeah, I've heard of a few other cities.
All right. I have number nineteen, we're gonna get there. Deliberate and act, take a record vote, schedule a date for required public hearing on proposed twenty-twenty-three ad valorem property tax rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget.
I'm gonna read this one so I don't mess it up. During the August second, August third budget workshop, the city council determined an appropriate ad valorem tax rate necessary to fund maintenance and operations and debt service in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The proposed rate is point three six zero zero seven eight per one hundred evaluation. This is a decrease in the tax rate from twenty-twenty-two of point zero one eight zero seven one per hundred evaluation. The Texas tax code, chapter twenty-six oh five, requires a governing body to hold a public hearing before voting on a tax increase. The public hearing date must be set by record vote. So if you'll remember our big chart, we talked about doing the voter approved rate with the unused increment. The rates I just read were based on that option. You can see on the chart at the bottom, the impact on the residential taxpayer and the average, based on the appraisals, not our tax rate, based on the appraisals, the average residential homestead will pay forty-nine oh nine more due to increased taxable value. I'll say again, our tax rate is going down. Your taxes go up because your value went up. Tonight, we're not talking, we're not voting on the tax rate. We are voting to hold a public hearing September fifth.
It's Tuesday, Vanessa, and we're trying to get clarification because Robbie, we said Anna at the thing said they were voting, had to take the record vote on the proposed tax rate, but we're looking tax year because that's not the way I understood it, so.
Mayor, propose a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Yeah, give us a minute. Sorry about that.
Not a problem.
We wanna do it right.
Literally, we don't.
Take a break.
We have never.